Here at Helmut Ford, we are a small-town dealership with no hassle and no pressure.
Valentine's Day is Friday, February 14th. Call or stop into the Garden Gate on the east side of the Sigourney Square. A special gift makes a special day. Let us help. We offer a variety of fresh flowers, balloons, candy, stuffed animals, candles, and many other gift items. We pride ourselves on over thirty years of design experience. The Garden Gate proudly serving Keyahcut County and surrounding areas for twenty-seven years. Call or stop in to get your order in for Valentine's Day.
Since, if I can roll call please.
Conrad?
Present.
McLaughlin?
Present.
Post speaker?
Present.
Lance?
Here.
Schultz?
Present.
Clark?
Here.
Okay, approval or amendment to tentative agenda?
Make a motion to approve the tentative agenda.
Second.
Conrad?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Post speaker?
Yes.
Lance?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
The consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a request is made prior to voting. Everyone was here last time, so, okay. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Conrad?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Post speaker?
Yes.
Lance?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Public hearings, I show none. Additional city business. Discussion and possible approval to repair damage to the 2004 Chevy Malibu.
So...
The question is whether to repair it or just let it be totaled and find a different vehicle.
Did you guys read this email that was sent from the O'Frazor?
Yes.
So if we total it, they would do the $3,075. Or if we decided to keep it and fix it, they would do $29,25. And the car would only have liability on it after that. It would no longer have comp in the collision.
And the repairs to it are less than what we would get?
Did you ever see what would happen if we just didn't do the claim?
I don't know.
And we paid for it out of pocket?
Wasn't that what we talked about?
Yeah.
Paying it out of pocket, I thought was...
The Public States Committee, when we met, we discussed maybe seeing instead of making a claim on the insurance, to just see what it would cost to fix. And then the city just paid that instead of having a claim against our insurance.
Which would be consistent with the counsel that we got from ForEx when they...
And still just have the liability of it after that?
I don't think it would have any impact on the insurance if you filed a claim.
Which was on it now?
Her, the car that, um, the other car was like forty-five and five thousand dollars worth again?
Oh, that was it, because we had to, yeah. I'm trying to remember the conversation and where it went, but the fact that we had to file a claim for the other auto deal was a factor in the decision.
I remember when ForEx was here, that he discussed saying, you know, maybe some of these smaller claims, instead of submitting them, if the city takes care of them on their own, that way it doesn't affect the rates. So I guess, do we want to table this until we see what it would cost, or do we want to go through insurance?
Well, the question I have on that, since the other car has five thousand dollars or so damage on it, there'd still be a claim against us anyway.
No, the city would just pay for that.
The city paid for the other car damage also?
Yeah, if we didn't do a claim to the insurance.
Okay, so the city, well, okay. City would be responsible for somewhere around eight thousand dollars?
How much is it to fix the car?
Two thousand, I think it was six hundred, something like that.
And it was, um, I think Doug talked to Tony and he said it would be probably a little bit less than twenty-six.
So we have to weigh that against the premium? I agree with you, that's what we discussed.
I'm thinking that we should just do this and get it fixed and just have it on loan. That's kind of where I'm going with it.
But as I had a point out, it's a claim.
I get it.
I don't know, I...
Still eight thousand dollars, you know that the city has to cover that. So where would that come from?
I would have to check.
I agree with Connie. But we go ahead and submit the claim. Usually on a single claim against the insurance, they don't come down on it very hard. It's when you have two accidents or three that it really gets expensive.
Yeah, we've had more claims, we had more claims too, years, I recall.
How long has it been since the city works vehicles have had claims?
It's been a while.
Yeah, but claims are mainly for property damage, storm damage, is that what you...
That's my understanding.
Yeah. That's all wrapped up in some policy. But it's supposed to be due to take into account that Doug is not currently driving a city vehicle, he's driving his own vehicle.
Well, he is now, because Donnie's gone. He's driven Donnie, right? Donnie's truck. But the car needs to be fixed either.
Right. Or something.
What's your deductible?
Five hundred.
I need to put it off in a moment.
I guess, I guess, for five hundred dollars. It's gonna take us a while. Five hundred versus eight thousand right now. And then basically, we can't predict the future with claims, so...
So you're okay with going ahead for a motion?
Yes, so...
I would, I would move that we approved the repair damage on the Chevy Malibu. Using, like, by filing an insurance claim, we're supposed to pay.
So...
Just to verify, and then that's why I'm gonna let you hold the...
Yes, because we're fixing it and keeping it, it will only have line bill coverage.
And add the $2,600 whatever it was for them to...
For the repairs.
Conrad?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Post speaker?
Yes.
Lance?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Okay, next, discussion, possible approval of July 4th, 2025 donation slash sponsorship letters.
Stephanie, do you want to...
Oh, I'll just say, I think I was gonna talk about this, uh, we had a meeting, I hope you're getting here, you have to hear. Anyway, um, we had a meeting a week or so ago and tried to switch on the same path that we have gone in the past and realized that we just need to send out a funding letter, so I kinda reworded the one we sent out. And was like, we sent it out, I was thinking that if we're sending it to businesses, I would donate because we're supposed to in the envelope. But if we were to have to send it in water bills or whatever, I would agree with that as well, so... Any questions?
Do we usually send letters like that in water bills? Have we done that in the past?
Uh, I think, no, we usually just send them to businesses, just separately, to businesses.
And I'm fine doing this to businesses, I just, um, feel bad, just being like, if somebody was like, oh, I would have donated, but I'd also don't wanna have people donate all the time, but...
I mean, I wouldn't hurt anything, we stuff water bills anyway, so if we wanted to, it's not a big deal.
This is for the city, it's not like it's for any other entity.
Yeah. And then we'll have a scheduled, uh, a regular schedule, probably the, probably the next time we, the first one in March, just for, shortly. We don't have like a set one just yet, but all the usual things are happening, so...
So I'll make a motion to approve...
I want to make a motion, go ahead.
Make a motion to approve the 4th of July, 2025 donation sponsorship letters be sent out via the water bills?
Second.
Conrad?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Post speaker?
Yes.
Lance?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Next, Iowa Economic Development Authority report. Who's responsible?
That's me, I just wanted to, gotta get it up on the screen. So on January 30th, uh, we were, we were visited by representatives from IEDA, three of them, to be specific. Jim Thompson, Jim Eggel, and Sarah Plon came to Sigourney to talk to us about, or to evaluate the buildings around the square and determine their candidacy for a CDBG block grant, which is the equivalent of facade project phase two, if you will. The, the goal here was to provide the planners with information and guidance, and where appropriate, to discuss alternative ways of funding some of the improvements, since probably not all buildings would qualify. This meeting was part of the strategic planning initiative, which, as you know, is jointly, um, being handled between KCED, the city, the county, and other representatives from, from the community and, and surrounding areas. So, just, just as was the case with facade phase one, in this case, the city would be the applicant and the recipient of any grant funds if we elect to pursue the project, which has not been decided yet. This is simply information gathering. It involves a, a grant administrator, which is from Area 15, just as was the case with the previous project. In order to receive funds, we have to have at least six buildings involved, uh, in order to, in order to be able to secure funding. In order to get the maximum amount that we would be eligible for, we would have to have at least eight buildings. Beyond eight buildings, you begin to dilute the money that, that would be made up in the grant. So there's a bit of a balancing act. And the, the exception to that would be, um, an iconic building. And in our world, an iconic building would basically be the memorial hall. By my count, and from, I, by my count and from picking up on the notes, since I wasn't actually at the meeting, the IEDA team identified twelve structures that would potentially qualify, and they identified structures on all four sides of the square. And we have, we have a list. The qualifying characteristics, a building would have to, to meet the criteria for blight, which is on the left-hand side of the, of the slide. This slide I just pulled from their deck, uh, because it was, it was easy to show what blight is and what light is not. So, I think, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. If the, if the outside of the building is looking, is starting to come apart, you got broken bricks, you got missing mortar, you've got rusting, peeling, et cetera, then it can qualify. We have an idea of buildings that do need that criteria. There are strings attached, because we're talking about federal funding. So just as the case with the facade of phase one, you've got to jump through all of those hoops, you've got to pay David's bacon wages, you've got to go through all of the EPA studies, et cetera, et cetera, that we went through first time. So if we are to, if we choose to pursue a facade phase two, those same requirements would kick in. Something that I thought was particularly of interest to us, given our experience with facade phase one, usually cities issue RFPs, uh, which is exactly what we did in facade phase one. In which case, code states you have to take the lowest bid, although there are ways around that. The suggestion that was made during the onsite visit was that we might want to consider an RFQ, which would allow us to work through any candidates until we found the proper mix that we were looking for in terms of qualifications and price, at which time we could do, we could, we could award the contract. It's a different process. IEDA has templates on their website, or has a template on their website that we could, we could utilize. And I, I wanted to put that out on the table as a way where we might be able to avoid some of the difficulties that we had on facade phase one. Connie and Stephanie were both at the meeting, so I would invite either of you to add anything that you think is, is relevant.
I just really enjoyed listening to Sarah, she did most of the talking, and learning about the RFQ, so that we could avoid that in the future. I thought that was just instrumental, it would be a game changer.
Any comments from you, Stephanie?
Um, for you not being at that meeting, you were doing a wonderful job of explaining what happened. No, I have only a comment.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on that. On the facade project we did, it included roofs if the building owners wanted a roof. And they said at that time, that was not a normal situation for facade projects. Would this include roofs?
I think the answer would, that, that would depend upon the condition of the building and the recommendations of the architect. So I don't think we could answer that at this point. I don't think that they're explicitly excluded from everything that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all I have. I will surrender the screen. Any questions before we move on?
Okay, discussion of updating signage in and around Sigourney.
I guess that's me again. Oh, wow.
I told you I put them on.
Yeah, but I gotta do a version, so...
Oh, you're, okay, I'll get out of there.
I made some changes from the one I sent you yesterday, I will send you the new version. So, um, as you may recall, when we were, when we had the strategic planning onsite visit, back, I believe, in September, one of the first things that the IEDA representatives suggested, or, excuse me, the boost representatives suggested was, uh, they took note of the fact that there was no signage in the community. They, they made comments about, the, the example that they used was, "So do you have a parking lot?" "Yeah, we have a parking lot." "Where is it?" "Well, it's over there." "Do you have any signs that point to it? How do, how do people know you've got it?" That was the essence of the conversation, and it, it made, it made a lot of sense. I know that we added signage to our list of topics to prioritize. We haven't had that meeting yet, but I wanted to provide some information on possible, oops, who am I?
No, something happened.
I'm not sharing. Let's try that again.
I have one on mine. Hold on. That's not it. That's not even close. Let's try this.
No internet, it says.
It's on my, it's on your screen, how come it's not on your screen?
He says I have no internet.
Oh, you lost your internet connection? Well, that's a problem.
Question I have is, how much is this going to cost and where's the money coming from?
I've actually got some information on the first part of that, I can't answer the second one.
I have to take the panel, we can use the boost dollars for signage.
Potentially. I can show you, it's gonna be kind of tricky if she's not connected.
Adam, are you connected? Can you see the signs?
Uh, no.
I'm good. I'm good.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't know what happened.
That looks promising. There we are. Thank you. So, all, all I wanted to accomplish, uh, in, in this meeting was just to share some options for the types of signs that we might consider if we decide to prioritize it in, in, in the budget book. Obviously, that decision hasn't been made, but this information makes it a little bit more real and it, it gives us some options, uh, that we could consider if we wanted to add signage to various locations in, in and around Sigourney. There are a variety of styles and options that you could choose from. I've seen these in various communities around that I've visited. I think it, it adds a certain aesthetic. And there, there are obviously different layouts, different formats, et cetera. Not advocating any one of them, or even suggesting, other than we just take this as informational for future conversation. One of the things that, uh, one of the additional things that we talked about was the possibility of signage, programmable signage for events. And to, to Jimmy's question, you know, how much do these kinds of things cost? I can't speak to the non-animated signs, but the upper left-hand sign, as you can see, dimensions forty-one inches by sixteen inches is about eight hundred dollars. The one in the lower right is twenty-five, twenty, twenty-eight hundred dollars. It seems to be driven by the amount of real estate in the sign. I don't know a great deal about it. But, um, those are the two categories of sign that the research that Holly and Darian did brought up for consideration. And then the final point was, where might signs be relevant? Where might they be helpful? And, uh, we don't need to go through this line by line, but you can see by glancing at it that there, there are a variety of possibilities that we could prioritize, evaluate. You don't have to do them all at once, of course, that wouldn't be part of, that wouldn't be part of the idea. But to improve walkability, to improve, to improve, uh, the ability of someone who doesn't live here to find things within the community, uh, these things might be useful. And even in the surrounding areas. Signage to the fairgrounds, to the opera house, Scum River Trail, potentially living things, things like that, would potentially be assets to the community. That's all I have, unless there are questions. Again, I'm just sharing this information, you can put it in the files and, and look at it at the appropriate time in the committee meetings. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Keyahcut County Economic Development, KCED report, Gary, it's back to you again.
I've probably talked enough. I, I think that kind of covers, I've already covered everything that we've been engaged in over the last couple of weeks, so I don't, I won't add anything at this point in time.
Okay. Park and Recreation, discussion and possible approval of Resolution Number 2025 dash zero two dash zero one, approving pool personnel for 2025 swim season. Connie?
So, um, Park and Red met and, um, Brooke, Gary and Jurick, um, has looked over the applications, and, um, we would like to make a recommendation to approve this, uh, resolution with the following, um, employees as pool personnel for the 2025 swimming season. There are three assistant managers, one manager. And when the assistant managers, same as last year and previous years, when they are not being in the manager role, they will be a lifeguard, and that is kind of, that is for child. Any questions on, on the personnel or anything? So, if nobody has any questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2025 dash O2 dash O1 for approving pool personnel for the 2025 swimming season.
Second.
Conrad?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Post speaker?
Yes.
Lance?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Discussion and possible approval of Resolution Number 2025 dash zero two dash zero two, establishing city pool rates and information for calendar year 2025. rates and information for calendar year 2025.
So, once again, with the Park and Rec, we would like to make the recommendation. There haven't been any changes to the rates for the pool season, same as last year. The only thing that we did not offer this year is mommy and me classes, just because there was not an instructor this year as compared to the previous years. But everything else remains the same. It worked really well last year, and we'd like to go with that again this year. Does anybody have any questions, feedback? If not, I'd like to make the recommendation to, or make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-02-02, establishing city pool rates and information for calendar year 2025.
Second.
Conrad?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Rosebaker?
Yes.
Lenz?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Under street sanitation, street and sanitation report on recycling and the 28E agreement with Kiakup County. Now, I've met with the county supervisors twice and discussed this with them, and this is what they told me. If we do not renew our contract with them, then no one in the city would be able to use a recycle center. The entire city would be blocked from using it. So...
Unless they went down and paid for it on their own?
No. They won't let them come in there even if they're paying on their own.
They can't go down and buy the bags?
No. No, that's what they said.
Did you talk to somebody?
I asked about the other cities in Kiakup County, and he said none of the residents of those cities can use a recycle center because they don't have a contract.
So who monitors that out there if it's from another city? So how do they, how do they track that down?
I assume it's the two gals that are there.
So do they have data that they showed you, or that they've been showing us?
No.
Because that's what I think we're lacking.
Right, but let's say there's five people who are down there, and they ask them if they're in the city. Three or four might get by with using it, but then some won't. But they said no one from the city would be allowed. And they recognize people from the city.
Did you talk to Cox that owns the company?
No.
Because I don't think the board of supervisors can dictate who can and cannot use a private business. I'm guessing the supervisors would think...
Well, I'm thinking that's our 28E agreement.
28E agreement is a mythic.
Even if we didn't have a...
It's about the payment for our...
But if I wanted, if we, the city didn't have an agreement with the county, and I wanted to go and do recycling, and I wanted to pay Cox on my own, I don't know why that would not be allowed.
Yeah, I had always thought that...
That would be a question for Cox, not supervisor or anything.
Okay, well, there's no action to be taken on this. I can give Cox a call and find out what they have to say about it.
Were they willing to reduce the nineteen hundred dollars a month cost at all?
When I was talking to Mike, he said maybe a hundred dollars, but probably not.
Reduce it by?
By one hundred. It's nineteen hundred dollars now a month. And he feels, and the gals down there feel, there's more than one hundred households that use it each month. And Connie said, that's what Connie said, there's about one hundred that use it. I don't know. Brent, do you have any idea? So, I don't think anybody's keeping track of that.
That's a rather problem. That, that may have to happen.
So...
So, county bank is this kind of disposition because they feel like they own the building?
I don't know why they took that position. In fact, he also said that if we pulled out of our contract, they would probably close that recycle center.
Close it?
Close it.
And then what would they do for the rest of the county?
I guess you go to Ritzland. And there, there's a minimum fee, and you pay by the tenish.
Something's not making sense to me. This doesn't make any sense at all.
Well, I asked him, I said, "What do the other towns in Kiakup County do?" And he says, "A lot of them get the dumpsters from Cox, and Cox comes out and picks those up." So they don't use the recycle center.
They have certain data, the Cox trucks come by and pick?
I don't know. I don't know.
We don't want a bunch of dumpsters sitting in the...
No.
In people's yards.
No, you don't. I think he was referring to the city itself had dumpsters, that citizens could throw things into.
We tried that before.
Yes. Well, let me find out a little bit more information on this. There's no action being asked for at this time, and we'll take it up again.
What is it, that we have to give notification if we want to just continue by when?
When does a month prior?
Right. Thirty days.
We have to decide before the end of May.
Okay, let's just keep that in mind.
Right. Okay, let's move on to setting a street sanitation committee meeting. And I'll have more information when we have that meeting.
Would that be a good time to ask the supervisors, or at least one of them to come and give more information? If we don't get a straight answer or something, because I think that would be important.
I don't know what else they can say.
Somebody from Cox, probably.
Somebody from Cox, maybe. I'll contact Cox and see what, see what they have to say. Now, Cox, are they out of, what is it, North English up there? Is that where they are? Street sanitation committee meeting.
How soon are we needed?
Well, that's up to the three of us.
Well, okay, so, obviously, I'm not home, I'm not working.
Right.
And I, next week, it's not a good week for me, but I can work it in if we need to have it.
Well, I think it should be within the next two weeks if you can make that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good. It's the week after that. Let's see, nuck out for me again on the nineteenth, I'm wanting to have it prior to that.
Well, if this is the only business, I guess we could go longer than that, too. Because we have until, what'd you say, the end of May to make this decision?
Well, thirty days prior.
Well, thirty days prior, you can back out, but our contract goes, I'm thinking thirty...
You mean that, that would be before July, or June?
We're doing this because of the fiscal year budget, correct?
Yes.
We're talking about it.
So that means we have to be settled by March. Do you know?
With some sort of...
Either we have a meeting next, next week, I can probably do it on Tuesday or Thursday, as far as I know.
I can't do either one of those.
How about the following week? Eighteenth through twentieth?
Tuesday, probably the Tuesday and the Thursday is best for me.
Following week, both of them for me, eighteenth and twentieth. Connie?
I can do the eighteenth, but I cannot, well, I can do the eighteenth and the twentieth, yeah. As long as the twentieth was during the day.
I can do either of those if we meet, can we meet at four o'clock, Randy?
Yeah, sure.
Gary, you're not...
You're not on it. Ed is on it.
Thank God.
Are we talking the eighteenth or the twentieth? Either, either is like Ed.
Why don't we look at the eighteenth, does that work?
Perfect.
Okay.
Anytime.
At what time?
Six.
Six.
Six? Then that's fine.
Are you good with that? Yeah. Okay.
Okay, six and eighteen. Okay, thank you. Water and wastewater, discussion allowing owner to pay two hundred forty-eight dollars eleven cents to pass Waterville at location 109 East Marion Apartment Number Two.
Yes, we discussed this in committee, and after discussion, the resulting recommendation was to, to only, to, to only require the owner to pay the two forty-eight eleven because it was procedural error that resulted in a higher bill. We also talked about whether or not we needed to change our policy, and the conclusion was no, the policy is fine as it stands.
We just need to follow it?
We just have to follow it, exactly. So that's the recommendation from the committee to the council.
That's kind of all I had to put on there as... So you just wanted to inform them?
Yes.
So you don't need a motion or anything?
Well, this doesn't allow for a motion, just discussion. So you're informing us of what decision was made?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, let's move on. Public safety, discussion possible approval of the first reading of ordinance Title Four, mental and physical health, Chapter One, animal control.
So the public safety committee's met for several months now, and we've been looking at updating our animal control ordinance. And really, the only thing that we were looking at changing or adding to is four dash one dash four, which is animal nuisances. And it just, in there, we just put a set schedule civil penalty if you, if anybody violates Section four, one, four, one, two, or three. And that stemmed from, we've had complaints at our city parks, our sidewalks, of like dog feces being just a dog gone and the owner not picking it up. This allows our Doug to issue a civil citation instead of having to, which is just a civil fine, comes right to the city, and it doesn't have to go to court for doing anything like that. And then we also looked at four dash one dash nine, keeping a vicious dog or cat, and we, in this, it's basically number two and three is, so if a dog, if you have a dog or a cat that bites somebody and it leaves bodily injury, which is defined by Iowa Code, the city, they could be liable of a civil penalty in the amount of one hundred fifty dollars that's paid here against civil, civil penalty. Or if they don't wish to do that, and the dog, so if they pay the penalty, the dog is allowed to stay in town versus how it was in the past where it would be brought in front of the council, and then the council would make the determination, even on a first bite, cause a bodily injury, to have the dog removed. This allows for, for a first offense, if a dog does create bodily injury, the dog owner or cat owner could be fined a hundred fifty dollars and then allowed to keep the dog. If they do not wish to pay the fine, then they can, then the dog will be removed from town, and they need, within fourteen days, and they would have to provide in writing to the city clerk, the location where the animal's been moved, and then a name and phone number for a contact person where the dog has been. That way, we can check and verify that the animal has in fact been taken out of town. And then item number three would be is if the dog causes serious injury, which is defined by Iowa Code. In that aspect, then a fine would escalate because the damages would be greater. It would be a civil penalty of two hundred fifty dollars, and then at that point, the dog shall be removed from the town. They don't get the option of keeping the dog in town. And that, the reasoning behind that is because if a dog creates serious bodily injury, or serious injury, it's a substantial injury, and we feel that we don't want animals like that in town. This, the updates to this ordinance have been presented to the city attorney, and he's made any corrections or anything to it, and put his stamp of approval on it.
He has already reviewed it?
Yes.
This doesn't increase any liability or our part?
I mean, liability, what do you mean?
By allowing, well, I mean, this is more linear than it's there. And so as long as we have this set out for, that we don't, we're not sticking our necks out at all, the city creating any more liability. Is that correct?
I don't believe, I mean, I don't, I don't believe this is any lenient than our other, than the old ordinance, because the old ordinance, it just basically, if any dog bit somebody in the city limits, we would request the dog owner to come in front of the council, and then the council would just make a decision to either remove or keep the dog in town. And so I mean, I don't think this opens us up with any more liability.
All this does is it gives a proscriptive method for handling the infraction.
Yeah, this kind of clearly identifies, if this happens, this is the consequences.
And the liability would be on the animal's owner. Back to the dog feces, I am not sure if you're all aware, but we used our cameras around the square, and we saw who it was that had a dog that was depositing over by the fountain and in that whole area, and there was a lot of it there. Doug went over, talked to him, and gave him a, gave him a choice of paying a nice, healthy fine or picking it up. So the couple, both went over, and they ended up with two grocery bags full of feces, and they picked it all up, and it looks a lot better now. But another area of concern is John Weir's lot right beside Memorial Hall. You don't dare walk through there. It is just full. We don't, I don't think we have a camera in that area to catch whoever's doing it.
Yeah, we do, we have one in the city.
Right across the, across the street.
Okay, but would it be pointed that way?
Yes.
I think you can see down the alley. It was put there so you could see down the alley, I thought.
Should be able to. I'll bring that up to Doug. He can investigate that. Okay, do you have a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance?
Before any comments, suggestions? If, okay, if not, I would make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance Title Four, mental health and physical health, Chapter One, animal control.
Second.
Conrad?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Rosebaker?
Yes.
Lenz? She got disconnected. Schultz?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Okay, finance. So the finance committee meeting, Ed?
Did you tell me that she's gone? She's still there?
Oh, no, she's gone. But she's, I asked her before the meeting when she could meet, and she told me. Any day but Friday.
Monday is seventeen?
Monday is seventeen? Okay. What time? Six still?
Six.
Gary?
Yep.
Jimmy?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Human resources, I'm showing nothing. City clerk, discussion of possible approval of Jessica Weber successfully completing her probation period and increasing her pay from seventeen dollars to seventeen fifty per hour. Ashley, how's she been doing?
She has been doing well. After our meeting that we had a month ago, so, the issues that we had addressed, she has corrected. She does her job well, she knows what she's doing, whatever I ask of her, she does it.
And she's always pleasant at that front desk. And she's always pleasant at that front desk.
You're okay with it, then, Ashley, then I would make a recommendation to approve Jessica Weber a increase from seventeen to seventeen fifty for her probationary period.
Second.
Conrad?
Yes.
McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Host speaker?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yeah.
Clark?
Yes.
Okay, public input. Casey, I think you're the only public.
Right.
Any input?
No.
Council?
Well, I'm my public, but he's not.
Well, he's...
He's just recording.
Yeah, he's just recording.
He's just recording.
Paper, he's recording.
Okay, public input from the council? If none, I entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I understand.
Second.
Conrad?
Yes.